All right. The first item we have on the agenda is to approve the agenda. To the best of my knowledge, there were no additions or deletions, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. We have a motion by Counselor Buller. We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes. We have the minutes from March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Holden.
I'm good with Pete, if that's easier.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the minutes of March thirteenth. That was our committee, the whole meeting last week. Chair would entertain those.
Make that motion.
Thank you so much. Counselor Holden, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the resolution for the transfers, payment, claims, and accounts payable. We have transfers going to the permanent improvement fund in the amount of sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and sixty-six cents. That's coming evenly from the six-oh-one water fund and the six-oh-three sewer in equal amounts of thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Going to the four-oh-three reserve for capital outlay is twenty thousand, five-hundred, sixty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. That is coming from the six-oh-one water fund in the amount of fourteen thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars. And then out from the six-oh-three sewer in the amount of five thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Total transfers of eighty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Accounts payable, we have City of International Falls claims of three-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and eighteen cents. And International Falls Public Library Board claims of four thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. For a total of accounts payable and claims of three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty dollars and seventy cents, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the payments and claims.
I move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler.
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Go to audience. If there's anyone in the audiences has anything to bring forward that is not on the agenda. Hearing none, you'll also have an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Going down to consent agenda, we have, I believe, four items on the consent agenda. The first one is approve the twenty-twenty-three liability coverage waiver form, not to exceed, not to waive limits on municipal tort liability and authorized signatures. Approve and allow necessary expenses for elected officers and department heads to attend the twenty-twenty-three League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, June twenty-first through the twenty-third in Duluth. Approve ending an employment with Michaela Wordier per the International Union of Operating Engineers. And approve removing Kyle Rasmussen from the position of spare firefighter engineer. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Wagner. Do we have a second?
I'll move.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Call the question.
Aye.
Name.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, or motion does not carry because it is the consent agenda. Is there a particular item that you would like to have taken out of the consent agenda?
Well, I just voting against number three.
Okay. Would you like to, what would you, how would you like to handle that?
I don't know. I, it was brand new to me about it, and I'd just like to get more input. I'd like to have it polled for now and get more input. Now, why?
Okay, I will pull that for right now. I'll put that on the agenda, the first regular agenda item, and I will explain how that needs to be handled at that time. So with pulling of item number three, leaving one, two, and four, I would ask for a motion to approve those three of the consent agenda.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by Counselor Holden. It is the consent agenda. There is no discussion. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Those three items have been approved. Counselor Holden would like to remove number three since that is regarding an employee. We will have to have that as a closed meeting to discuss an employee's stuff. She has to be, she has the right to be present in that conversation. So, city administrator, how would we handle that from this time? Do we have to work with that employee to have that conversation?
Yes, and then we'd have to schedule a special meeting at that time, and then if she chooses or the individual so chooses to have it closed, they can, or it can be an open meeting, but that is, they do have the right to, to that. Okay, so we would have to have a special meeting for that.
So if you could, by direction of the council, set that up with the employee so that we can figure out when that works with the city council, and we'll call a meeting at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So the first real new business item we have is the county assessor open book meeting on Wednesday, May seventeenth, from nine AM to noon at the county assessor's office. That's over at the courthouse, seven fifteen, Fourth Street. And now this is a formal appeal for taxpayers to discuss their property assessment and valuation. So I'm gonna just jump on a quick soapbox real quick. At the end of the year, when we have our budget and we're doing our truth and taxation meeting, and we have people that come in because their taxes have went up, that isn't the time to have that conversation. This is the time to have the conversation about the valuation of your house based on how much you value your house goes up, also is what your taxes will go up. If, if your house value goes up and we don't change anything with, with taxes in the calendar year, your taxes could still go up because of your value. Now, it could be different as well if you, if your home value stays the exact same, and then we, we raise value, or raise taxes, your taxes could go up. But if both things happen, then your taxes also can go up. So if you think that your house is overpriced by what his valuation is, now is the time to go and talk to him because things can actually be changed at this time of year. If we wait until after the next process, which I believe is the Board of Appeals, nothing can really happen at that point. So take advantage of this opportunity to go to the tax assessor's office and just, just find out where your, your property is in value and just make sure that it's all right and that you guys are on the same page. Again, that is May seventeenth, from nine AM to noon at the county assessor's office, or just give them a call and they'll set up a time for you to be able to do that as well. Next, we have a resolution approving a commercial loan program funding in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, as requested by True Star Federal Credit Union on behalf of Whispering Leaf. Rock, what is that?
Irrevocable.
Irrevocable trust. Irrevocable trust to improve the building located at three-hundred-and-forty-five Third Street. Max Ducharme. Max, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can hear you perfectly. Do you want to tell us a little bit about your project?
Yeah. We were able to take control of the old sport shop, I mean, the current sport shop building on Main Street. It has three floors. If you've ever seen it, it's got windows all down one side. It's a very cool old building, and our desire is to renovate the second and third floor. They've been empty for years. When I first walked around up there, there's a New York Life office on the second floor. It's got a New York Life plaque in the window, and there was a calendar in there, August of nineteen-eighty-one, hanging on the wall. So I thought that was, it was pretty cool. There's, there's some cool stuff, excuse me, there's some cool stuff in there. But it's been empty for that long, and we would like to turn it into, the plan evolves as we get engineers and contractors involved, and they say what's possible and what's not. But the current plan is to turn it into two smaller apartments on the second floor and one large apartment on the third floor. It's about fifteen to sixteen hundred square feet of living space we'd be able to get per floor. So that's the current idea. It's kind of a cool spot to do that. I think there's demand for that kind of living space. And yeah, and I'd love to see an old building not crumble down. That's kind of what our main goal is, is to restore it, get it used, and yeah.
Excellent. Council, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Ducharme? Hearing none, I will request someone make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Ducharme.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have Planning Commission recommendation regarding the application to change zoning of parcel from R one B to residential to M one B manufacturing for Shannon's Incorporated. I don't see Dave Hebig there, but Kelly, you want to just come up real quick and just give us a quick background of this?
Thank you, Mayor Council. The, the property that is questioned is adjacent to the Old Hauler School. I believe in your packet, you'll see a mapping there. It's next to the Hauler and Ballfields, which is the last parcel on that behind the building. And what the request is for is they, they did a, it was R one B for residential housing. They wanted to change it to the M one B matching the rest of the former Hauler School, which we did before with another parcel adjacent to it, what you see on your map. Basically, what they're doing it for is they need a little bit larger laydown area than what they have. They also need a place for snow storage in the winter because they have such a large lot. They have nowhere to really put that snow. And what they'll be using this for is basically extra parts that they have throughout the year that when they're working on a project for, you know, wherever they're at, they have to have a staging area to place it. They just need more room. We did put in there, I think it's, I'm sure it's written in your, we did have the request from the Planning Commission that they put a ten-foot buffer on the backside, which is that alley side of the property, at the request of, of the neighboring properties and the, and Shannon's themselves. So if they do not have the fence, if they're not gonna leave the trees as the buffer in that certain area, they would put a fence up in that area. They had no opposition to that. We did not have any concerns from the public about the change in use. We had a couple people that were worried about the possibility of maybe their taxes going up because of the change in use. We do have Len Peterson on there, and it would not change their tax purposes at all. So the recommendation coming from the Planning Commission is to, is to make that, that change in the use of that property.
Okay. And we don't have to do a second reading or anything on this.
This is just a motion. Basically, what it is, is it's, it's our decision what properties are zoned as, and what I'll be doing is calling our engineers. We will be changing our zoning map to show the change on that map, and that's basically all we have. So.
Okay. All right, we have, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we go to resolution for a one-to-four day temporary on-sale liquor license and permit for St. Thomas Catholic School in connection with the St. Thomas School Gala on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Kaler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we go to a resolution approving an application for an exempt permit for the Minnesota Deer Hunters Association Trails End Chapter to conduct a raffle with a drawing to be held April twentieth, twenty-twenty-three at Bacchus Community Center.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Counselor Holden has a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have the first reading of the contract ordinance for the repair from the flooding damage at City Beach. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that repair damage.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller.
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? Now, just help me remember, this comes out of the flood relief from the, the funding for this one?
Part of it is out of the flood relief.
Okay.
Part of it don't come out of park.
Park and recs, okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, approve survey services of Hauler Field as provided by Bolton and Mink. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those services.
Move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Wagner. Discussion? Now, this would come out of park, please.
Just, just for information, the reason for, for that being is the fencing is so bad out there that we need to do, find our corners and find out where we can put the fence in that ballpark. That's a major reason of it. It's a reason, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that really needs some work. We, we're all aware of that. But this, this would come out of Parks and Recreation as well, correct? For the services?
Ready? I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Approve a memorandum of agreement to plan and implement protection and restoration efforts for Rainy River, Rainy Lake watershed as part of Rainy River and Rainy Lake Planning Group and Appointment and appoint members. Chair? Eddie, was it, who are we appointing to this?
I believe it, Jason is correctly.
Please, I, I, this is coming out of public work, so I didn't know anything about it. Please.
Well, I just, it is what it, what it says here, and to be, he probably knows more about the actual planning and stuff.
Please come up, tell us all about this.
But I volunteer because it's on the Rainy Lake River Basin, and I'm already part of the Rapid River.
Okay. Rapid River Run.
Yeah, whatever.
Correct. This is part of, of a one watershed, one plan program that we agreed to a memo of understanding last fall, and now we're at the point where we need to do the agreement. And with the agreement, we need to appoint an elected official to be on that, that policy committee.
Okay.
For developing this plan to protect our watershed. So, and with this, we will get grand dollars to pay for the development of this plan. It's gonna be coordinated by the Kooch County Oil and Water Board, so, and this policy committee that's being pulled together. Okay. So then, appointing Pete?
You're appointing Pete, yeah.
All right. And, and we should appoint an alternate also. And Walt?
And Walt.
Okay, good. So we will approve the memorandum of agreement, and we will be appointing Counselor Kaler with an alternate of Counselor Buller, which are representatives on the Public Works Board. All right. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
So move.
We have a motion by Counselor Buller. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Kaler. Very eager.
Oh, I, today, more trips to Bridgeville, I'm hoping.
So we have a motion in a second. Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. All right. Committee of the whole recommendations, approve participating in the Rainy Lake Coalition as it relates to the Canadian National Railroad Bridge, mile eighty-five over Rainy River, Rainier, Minnesota. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Counselor Buller. Any discussion? So the one thing that I've heard since, since that last meeting, and I just want to make sure that everyone is aware of this, one of the things that they're looking at is clearing out that old rock that's underneath there. And that old rock that's underneath there is what makes the lake have a higher, I don't even understand the, how water flow goes, but it, it actually stops the drainage from going directly into Rainy River. So when we have flooding, it happened all at the lake, but this gives an opportunity by removing that for the flooding to go into the International Falls banks and go down the river. I just want to make sure everyone is aware of that, but that is something that came to my attention in the last week. So just wanted to make sure everyone understood that. Any other?
Meeting's gonna start happening while that breaks. Any idea?
None.
That, that would be a, you'd have to call Rainier City Hall.
Yeah, the mayor of Rainier came last, last Monday to our committee, the whole meeting, and asked if we would sign a letter of support for the cleaning underneath the bridge and working with CN. However, and we're, we're willing to sign that, that agreement with them, but it's still Rainier and Kooch County's. We have no say in it.
No meeting, you're gonna come back and report back?
No. No, it's not our, we're just supporting it. We're, we're, it's not in our jurisdiction in any capacity. So we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries five zero. Next, we have approve entering into a lease agreement with Bacchus Community Center to provide space for the police department.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Holden. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by Counselor Buller. Discussion? Yeah. Please.
I have discussion. I, I just, this, I have received a lot of calls on this. Many concerned citizens, so I'd just like to take the opportunity to tell you what I know about it and how we got to this point, and address the citizens of International Falls and Kooch County. From the questions I've got from people, they don't know clearly how the city council of International Falls arrived at the decision to consider moving the IFPD to Bacchus Community Center. So this is the background I have. City Council by Falls received a letter from Kooch County Board on December thirtieth asking if we could be renewing our city's lease with the LEC and entered into a long-term agreement at a monthly cost of nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Understandably, the county's facing task of building a new jail. The letter had to also affirm deadline. We had to respond by February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. To me, this corresponds, correspondence read itself as there was no room to negotiate. It was a take it or leave it. So here we are with the Bacchus lease. Some items I've been most questioned on, there are three approximately, and one of them that seemed to have residents fairly upset is the question of the identity of the IFPD, something that Chief Koscheck alluded to in his letter. It's my feeling that this, this city council is not the body that is to provide a group identity. That's after the leadership of that group. So, you know, that, that, I don't think that plays into our decision here. The city council, however, is the fiscal agent of the city, and therefore we're entrusted to funds and to use them equitably. So the Bacchus lease is six thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, seventy-six cents a month, which is a considerable cost savings. The city council is also entrusted with public safety of its citizens. Chief Koscheck has assured us that there will be no lapse in public safety. I believe this. I hope this clears up some of the public's questions and concerns. Finally, I would like to say I'm still under the belief that the two entities, the county and the city, which I brought up at more than one meeting, need to still sit down and discuss this face to face. I, I don't understand how this could ever get to this point without some more work on that. I've, I've got a background in negotiations. There's no reason why they're, they're new, we're new, newer, I should say, why we can't sit down and talk about this some more and, you know, just see where, where we're at. We've, we've discussed it. We've, we've got a path forward, and they know, basically, it feels like we, our bluff was called and, and we stuck to our guns. Mr. Mayor would therefore put forth a motion to postpone the adoption of the Bacchus lease for the IFPD and refer it back to the committee until the council meeting of April seventeenth. And I would ask Administrator Bergstrom from this council, hopefully, to reach out to the Kooch County Board, and let's have a meeting with the entire city council, county board, administration, discuss this matter prior to the April seventeenth meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to table this for.
Not table.
Not what it, what was the word? I'm sorry.
Postpone.
Postpone this vote.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this vote. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Counselor Kaler. Discussion? The discussion right now is on the motion to postpone.
And send it back to the committee of the whole.
Yep. So here's what my concern is with, with that. Number one, I appreciate more than you can even understand that, that you have your, your notes written down and you were prepared for this. So thank you so much. The one concern that, that we have, and myself and the city administrator and the police chief did meet last week on Thursday to discuss the terms of the lease as we, as we had said we were going to do and bring back to this board. The, the concern that we have right now is we have already put in the, the time, we've already put in our end of lease with the county. We've already started the process of moving. That's not true. We have not started the process of moving, but we have started to purchase things to get ready for the move. In fact, on the next, next, one of the next items you see is the evidence locker that we're looking at being able to move. Time is of the essence. If we don't do it now, I, I think, and I don't think, this, this was part of the conversation that we had on Thursday. There's another opportunity that has just popped up in the community that we would be able to look at, but we do feel, myself, the city administrator, and the police chief, that going to Bacchus for the two years, and then if something had, pans out that we, we can go back at the county, it's gonna take them a while to get their. it's going to take them a while to get their stuff in place. We also know that it's going to take a while for us to get our information back from our RFQ. I mean, we've worked this process to where we're at right now. I don't, I don't think that we're in danger of not being able to go back, but I think that we have moved far enough along that we have to make a decision. And if down the road, going back to the law enforcement center makes sense, I would agree with that. I also would agree that our RFQ is coming. We can look at that. But right now, I think we're on a danger of time by giving our three-month notice at the county and not having a place to go in the next three months. So that's just, that's just my take. And we're still open for discussion on postponement.
Well, I feel the same way you do, Mayor. I think we need to get going on this and get it done. So I know how I'm going. The importance of it. Part of it is, is that they never gave us a date. Could have been for fifty years. They wanted a long-term lease. There was nothing there. If I took my checkbook at home and was paying on something and I didn't know how long I was going to be paying on it, I might be broke someday.
Give me the checkbook. I'll take care of it.
Okay. That's how I feel. Nothing, I mean, it was a no-brainer for me. So that's how I feel.
I'll just say I have, I've verbatim beaten the dead horse. Everybody knows how I feel, so I have nothing to add.
I don't have anything to add. I just have a question to make.
Please.
I'm understanding. Both Betty and I are understanding. So it was a motion to postpone the vote to April seventeenth, but you want to have a meeting before that?
Yes.
With the whole city council and that sort of thing? So it would need to be a?
Well, if the county board were to agree.
Okay.
I mean, if they don't, well, we're already in motion. It's not going to stop any of that.
I just want to make sure that would have to be an open meeting. So it would have to be like a special meeting?
Yep, yep.
Okay, and it would be?
No, no problem, no problem.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page here.
Yep. Thank you. Yep.
Walt, any thoughts?
My thought, excuse me. My thoughts are, we've got to move forward and, excuse me, get this done. My thinking is that when we made that, made that decision to move, it was also brought up at that time. I think it was even in motion that it could create some conversation with the county. And they had not responded at all. So I just think that it was not going to happen. I think we need to move ahead.
In their defense, they weren't here, so maybe they don't know.
So any other discussion on the motion to postpone? All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone the vote that we have. I will call the question on the postponement.
Yes.
Yes. And I'll vote no as well. So the initial motion that we have is from Councilor Holden and Councilor Buller to move forward with the Bacchus lease. Any other discussion? I just, again, I really appreciate how you put it into words of what has happened because you're a hundred percent right. This has been a long process and none of us, nobody up here thinks that this is a perfect move. It's somewhat about, it's somewhat about money, but it's not really about the money. It's somewhat about the long term of the lease without knowing how long term that lease is, which Councilor Holden had mentioned. But it's also about, and this was the conversation that really popped up when we were talking about the timeframe of the lease of the two years. The two years gives us an opportunity to look back and see if the law enforcement center is the right place for us. In two years, we'll be able to see that. They should be done with their construction. They should be able to see what that looks like moving forward, if there's space for us. Because either way that they were looking at doing it, they were still going to utilize that space, whether it was for the Veterans Administration or for us. It was still going to be office space, the same type of office space, one way or another. The other piece is the RFQ. And what has started this entire conversation was the county had to build new jail because of state regulations. We are dangerously close to having state regulations tell us that we have to do something about our fire and ambulance. Chief Manasseh has brought that to our attention. That's why we're going through the process of an RFQ to find out what makes sense to rehab the buildings, the facilities we have, or if it makes more sense to build new, or if it makes more sense to combine services with other organizations. So we have to go through that process. And within two years, we'll have a good understanding of where we're at. I think that that is the general understanding of the city council. I think we can all agree on we're looking at what's best for the residents, what's best for the departments. I know that this is what our departments feel is best from the leadership. And again, this is not a perfect deal. I don't think any of us ever intended to be putting the police department on the third floor of Bacchus. The one piece that didn't get brought up there in what you had mentioned is the two things that I have been talked to about. How do we, how do we service a nine-one-one call when we're on the third floor of Bacchus? I've said this quite a few times, but through COVID, we found out we don't necessarily need to be in a physical office building. Our police officers are on patrol. If there is a nine-one-one, they'll be dispatched right from their car to the incident in the event that we have to bring somebody else out, just like you would dispatch from Border Patrol or from Voyagers National Park when we bring in partnership agencies. The folks that are on the third floor of Bacchus will get down there and they'll get there. But our first responders will be the first ones there. So that is a non-issue. Again, the service level of our police department is not going to be lax through this process. And the second one is just not knowing how the system works. Where are you going to put the people that have to go to jail? Are you going to bring them up to Bacchus? No, we're still, we still have a great working relationship with the folks at Koochin County Sheriff's Office. That is the county jail. When we have someone that has to go to jail, we are county residents. They'll go to the county jail. We've had some conversations that have came up about having to do some interrogations with somebody under some bad circumstances, and we don't want them to go into Bacchus. Chief has worked some conversation, and it sounds like we have some places where we can go from both the law enforcement center to do that and also going to Friends Against Abuse for specific situations. All of the concerns that we have in our community are the same concerns that obviously our police chief has had, our city administrator has had, and the questions that have been asked around this table. Now, I think it's very clear, we're not all in agreement on how to do this, but I think we're all in agreement that we want what's best for the residents of International Falls and we want what's best for our police department. In the short term, this might be it. And I can guarantee you in the long term, this is not it. But again, I'm more than willing to answer questions on this. It is a hot button topic, but it seems everyone that I've spoken to, when I explained to them how we came to the decision that we had, it kind of makes sense. So any other discussion on this?
Yes, please. I would like to say I agree with Councilor Holden and Councilor Buller. That letter was terrible. And the citizens need to know that. That's what we were faced with. They put us against a wall, tried to put us in a corner and gave no ale. That was my only reasoning for this is at least then, if we reach out and then it doesn't go nowhere, then nothing, nothing lost, you know, doesn't hurt anything. That was, that was the whole point.
Well, a hundred percent. And one of the things that we have to do, and we have had that discussion, we need to have that sit-down conversation. Two boards, the county board and the city council, sit down. Commissioner Ricky Roach has reached out to myself and the city administrator. We had a great conversation. And since then, Commissioner Shobom has reached out to me on doing that as well. However, we haven't had any formal action on being able to put those two groups together because everyone is so short on, you know, being able to make that happen. But I do think that that's how we have to move forward, is at a united front because we're all in it together. So, but I agree with you wholeheartedly. Any other discussion? And at this time, I will call the question.
No.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion carries four for the motion, one against the motion. Next, we have approve participation on the Digital Connection Committee and appoint Todd Ojola-IT as the city representative.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kayler. We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye, aye.
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 And although yes, motion carries five zero. Next, approve frontier quote and upgrade to the current phone system to Mitel, to Yalink, SIP-T fifty-three W for all city departments except for administration and the fire EMS departments.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion carries five zero. Approve the purchase of an evidence locker for the police department in the amount of six thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars from line item one oh one dot four one one zero zero dot five six zero zero, capital outlay furniture and equipment.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
Second by Councilor Wegner. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And although yes, motion carries five zero. Any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of boards, committees, department heads, city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I have nothing additional at this time.
Okay, city attorney.
I don't have anything.
Oh, all right. That's like me saying I don't have something. And department heads, anyone have anything to bring forward? All right. In your package, you have the monthly police report from February twenty twenty-three, reports to the mayor, council, committees, boards and commissions. Anything?
Rec commission.
Please.
Okay, we voted as a group unanimous to dissolve the rec commission. The date is roughly, I believe, is the end of June. Also, the retirement letter of Bill Mason is coming together to be handed in. And he's retiring on June thirtieth.
Okay.
So it's moving fast. And then the school has to decide about their athletic director, that kind of thing. And then the city will be maintaining all the city facilities. So it's going to be, that's the way it's going to go. And should be able to work it out.
Excellent, please.
And if I may to just add to that, thank you, Mike, for that information as well. I was on the phone with Kevin Grover today, and he actually had the agreement to term the joint powers in front of the board this evening. But I wanted Mike to bring that forward and then myself to add to it so it wasn't just added to the agenda. So on the April third agenda, we will have that dissolution and the termination of the joint powers agreement in front of you as well. And then we will be meeting with the Public Works Director and Bill and Kevin and myself to just start the process of, you know, continuing the discussions on what it's going to look like this summer because we're going to need to take over our facilities. So does that look like more summer staff to man those and, you know, kind of iron those little pieces out before he does in fact retire?
Excellent.
So that will be the end of the rec commission?
Yep. Just got off the committee. All right.
I have a word commission if you need.
Oh, please.
Report from the cemetery board. We have hired a new web designer. Her name is Wendy Reiners. She'll be designing a new website for the cemetery board. And they are continuing mapping of the.
Plots.
Plots, yes, yes. So, and it looks really good so that you can go on there and find a loved one if you need to.
Excellent. Anything else? Just, I was contacted on Saturday. There is a hearing at the Capital Investment Committee at the Senate on Tuesday tomorrow. And I've been asked to testify. City of International Falls has potentially gotten a million dollars for the Cary Park project. We did have a meeting, myself, the city administrator and the Public Works Director. That's a wonderful thing, but it's really not going to help us much. I did look, our bill still is written with requesting fifteen point three eight million. With that being said, tomorrow when I testify, I am going to urge them to raise the dollar amount to one point eight million. The reason for that, that will cover the design and engineering for the project. That gives us an opportunity to have a tangible item that we can then look at naming rights or being able to figure out where we can get partners to be able to help us with the facility. There is an opportunity there for us, for sure. I know that there's going to be a second bond this year. High probability that there's a second bond. So if we don't get the one point eight in this, this one, we'll be able to put it, hopefully, we'll be able to get it into the second one. For those that don't know, last year, the City of International Falls had seven point eight million that was appropriated for the project, but then there was no bond issued last year. They didn't finish it. So we weren't able to move forward with the Cary Park project. If you look at all of the projects that are in that capital investment bill, International Falls is one of the lowest ones, is at one million. There is, I think, eight to ten other projects in this district alone. And that's, that's projects that are our taxpayers' money. It's other people's from the states to put in trails, to put in a health and wellness center, to put in, fix a sheet of ice in Herman Town. And we're talking five to ten million dollars for these other projects. International Falls has never asked for this. We have never went to ask for state bonding money because we have not done that. And we are asking now because Cary Park is in dire need. And we cannot, we can't afford to keep it up the way it is. But what we can do is figure out how to do the long-term maintenance on the building. We're working with a group that is helping us do that. We've worked with groups that will be utilizing Cary Park, that'll be paying for the use of Cary Park. So again, just like I said in my State of the City address, we're not putting money into this project until we know that we can do it. But it's important to our youth, it's important to our seniors to have this facility so it can be used by everybody in the community. No disrespect to the hockey players because, my gosh, did we have a heck of a tournament this weekend?
Yes.
But with that being said, Cary Park Arena is utilized for essentially one group, rec hockey. And we want to make sure that that building can be used for hockey players, for senior citizens that want to do Fit for Life, get in there and have some programs. Youth don't have a place for basketball. That has came up in our meetings. Volleyball is short. So it's not just a one-use facility. We're looking at a walking track. We're looking at things for the entire community to be able to utilize. So I just want everyone to know that I'm going to be going down and hoping to get some more, more support on this project from the state. And I'll continue updating you guys as I possibly can. I have nothing else, so.